Calamine order, want to welcome everybody here. We have the agenda in front of us here today and I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda, please. Counselor Siemens, seconded by Counselor Funk. All those in favor, carried. Let's move to the minutes of September 5th, regular council meeting on page one. Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Swagstra, moved by Counselor Funk, or seconded by Counselor Funk. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. We have no business arising from the minutes and we have no public hearings and so we'll move into the delegation and we have Staff Sergeant Harold Lenenga here today. Welcome and I'll ask you to take the podium and the floor is yours.
Thanks very much. I just thought I'd present the last quarter stats but I'm actually kind of, because I think it's a better picture if we look at the last six months, I've taken the liberty of doing that. I know you have the April to June stats in front of you. I think the numbers are fairly consistent is the one thing that has come out to me, except for perhaps in enforcement of traffic offenses. In 2016, there was 237, what we would call CONs or truckers. And that's in the first six months, obviously, and in 2017, there's 323, so almost 100. So I think that's indicative of the effort we're trying to put in to again keep our roads safe. And I think you're seeing a reduction in traffic accidents accordingly and to some degree, the impaireds are also down from 41 to 23 over that same period. So that's one aspect of traffic and I know that's as part of the annual performance plan, I'll also be asking you about. That's one of the, one of our goals was to reduce, reduce that. With respect to drug enforcement, I think fairly consistent in 2000, first six months of 2016, we had roughly 30 charges. 2017, 33, so just a marginal increase. In terms of assaults, they're down again, 54 to 42. So when we look at, you know, property crime and stuff like that, assaults is also just good to see down. Theft unders, very consistent, around the 110 mark, 120 mark, both periods. Breaking enters are 38, 37. Mischief, 108 and 112. So I think very consistent numbers and, you know, while I'm always hoping to see reductions and we are sometimes on a quarterly basis, I think overall, we're very consistent. So that's, unless there's questions regarding the report itself, that's what I'll present.
Sure, thank you very much. Are there questions from council on this? Counselor Siemens.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to thank you for the job that is, that is happening through our department and it is good. The question I have though is our GIS unit. I see that one place that we're doing less is with drug enforcement and that often is part of what GIS does as well, I believe. But can you speak to the GIS unit, what they're doing and how they're doing? That has been a priority of council over the last number of years.
Yes, I think GIS unit is incredibly important and fortunately, it has been vacant for the last probably three or four months and that's just because of manpower situations. I guess as one of my decisions that I have to make when we are short is whether we run the day-to-day operations, which is the people, the foots, you know, what I call boots on the ground, people responding to calls if we run that short versus our GIS. So because of the, just how easy we are, I've run the GIS unit vacant with an intention now to fill them over September, October. We've named a corporal or I think he's been named, my understanding is he's accepted a transfer here. So that will fill our corporal position and I just became aware yesterday that one of the people who've been waiting to transfer here has sold his house and he's also moving here, which will give us sufficient, what we call strength, in order to fill those positions. So I anticipate them being filled fairly shortly.
Thank you.
But it's incredibly important, obviously, GIS unit, the work that they do and I appreciate council's assistance with giving us those positions.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I find it interesting, the correlation you made there with the traffic offenses, the stepping up the traffic offenses and the way that you draw parallel to the accident rates going down and I think that's a very, very important part of enforcement.
Of course, there's also the education component and again, I'm sure Counselor Funk has shared, Counselor Funk has shared with you that we're doing the initiative again with the coupons on Thursday as part of the RCP advisor committee and that's something we'll be doing again. I think every year, it's received fairly well, let's start with Counselor Penner and Counselor, Counselor Penner?
All right, it's good, thank you. Further questions or thoughts? Counselor Funk.
Yes, I just want to thank you very much for all the work you and your members do. We are consistently seeing more and more cars on the street. Like I'm seeing them as I go about my day. I live, I live in the downtown area, I see your cars frequently and I know that's helping the problem, I know that's bringing these numbers down. And I know that you guys work tirelessly and we just want you to take that back to your members and say thank you.
So if I may, just the only other thing I'd like to discuss is just the annual performance plan and that's something we review every year. I usually bring it forward a bit earlier, I'm a little bit late this time.
Counsel, this is on page six.
So I'll just refer to last year's, so the first item, and these aren't in any particular order, just the way they're entered in the computer. One was visibility of police, which I think remains a very important initiative. Number two is organized crime. You may wonder what that refers to and I think we discussed that before. That refers to drug investigations with our belief that most of the drugs come through organized crime at one degree or another. Number three, obviously, property crimes, reducing breaking enters and vandalism, which reflects a mischief to property on the monthly report. And obviously, then the traffic initiative, which is also important. So just for your consideration, those were last year's priorities and I'll just ask you if you, let me know what you wish this year's to be.
Thank you. We will have that full discussion after we're done chatting, but we may have some questions for you beforehand and that is, and I can maybe start off with mine before any council members. When it comes to these four different areas that you're looking at, specifically the organized crime aspect with the GIS, how does that collate and being short officers, how do you, how do you expect that to change? How do you, how do you expect to put that emphasis on that as maybe?
The emphasis with that, I mean, it's an emphasis whether we have the GIS unit or not, but what the GIS unit does is it affords us the opportunity to run bigger projects and a lot of our, the work or the successes that we have with respect to GIS unit is often project-driven, where we'll target a specific group or, I'm sure you've seen in the papers, some of the arrests we have made and things like that. Generally, those are because of projects that our GIS unit gives, has the time and effort and they can, energy to put into those versus the day-to-day members who are going from call to call. So the JS unit affords us the opportunity to specifically target, in some cases, individuals or in some cases, a particular group of individuals who we knew, who we know are dealing with one aspect of drugs, whether it be meth or cocaine and marijuana and different things like that.
Further thoughts or questions on this, on the question in front of us and the question is, do we, is this what we want to see? So any questions before we move forward? Counselor Fair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, like these were our priorities. If you had to set priorities, would you put them in the same order as what these, these were? Besides, if you were, I know you're doing it because of respect for, that's what we asked, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
How you would see it as well?
Yes, these are, in my opinion, these are the priorities that are benefiting the city the most and these are actually priorities that pretty much establish across the board. I deal with yourselves, six other RMs as well as the First Nation of Buffalo, Buffalo Point First Nation and there are, not everybody has all four, but I would suggest for the city of Steinbach, the size we are and just the issues facing us, these are the four that we would want.
Thank you. Counselor Funk.
I'm sure that you get priorities also from Ottawa from head office. How do these priorities fit into the initiatives that they have for you?
It's a unique, how we do it is, we establish some priorities that are faced for youth. We, I mean, some priorities at different detachments for Aboriginal components, other for just community. So these would be what we'd consider our community initiatives, so you guys are actually coming forward, but they match very closely with how, with what Ottawa's asking us to do. So if I look at organized crime, well, there's a youth component there, right? Because unfortunately, some of our youth are using these drugs. So there's a tie-in between the city Steinbach's desire to reduce drugs and the RCPs also, particularly as it affects youth and affects other aspects of society. Breaking enters, vandalism, obviously, is, you know, when I look at every aspect of this, there's different components. The road safety is an initiative the RCP's had for, first I think it was Road Safety, Road Vision 2010, 2015 and 2020. You know, those are initiatives that the RCP comes up very consistent with what the city wants. And then we use some of the tools of Road Vision 2020, we use the STEP program, we lean extensively on MPI funding to allow our members on overtime to do some of these initiatives. That's, you know, outside the city Steinbach would be some of the gravel road initiatives. We do a lot of school zone initiatives, you'll see more and more about that as the school year progresses over the next little bit. Some of our check stops and stuff like that, so I think they want to very much tie in hand in hand.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Penner.
Yes, thank you. If you had one request of council at this point, either of services or resources that you would require to do an even better job of what you're doing now, what would it be?
You know, I'll be honest with you, I work with many of you, whether it be the RCP advisor committee or I meet with several of you, and not just to say that because I'm here in front of council, but I really feel that you guys are giving me the best chance to succeed in the sense that you've given us the resources. The GIS unit's incredibly helpful. So when I talk about resources, I always say that, you know, the city has, in my opinion, like would I love another resource? Absolutely, but I do think the city has, has provided the resources and I think as we grow, I trust that that'll continue to grow, but if you're going to say right now, what do I need, you know, I don't think, I don't think there's anything that's safe that's provided with us or else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we will discuss this shortly after, after you're done your presentation. Anything in closing?
No, just thanks very much for everybody's support and stop at your stop signs on Thursday.
Well, I just want to say on behalf of council, thank you. Thank you personally for your, the, thank you to you personally for the job that you do and the presence that you have in our community. It's commendable, you are at community events, you are there with your, your staff, you're, you're involved in the community and you're, you're keeping us informed and I just want to say thank you for the work that you're doing. Excellent.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. All right, council, so the question we have in front of us and we do have to provide it to, to them in not too distant future and we may choose to talk about that tonight or make a decision tonight, but before that, I'll ask Mr. Workington. Mr. Workington, we have on page six, the four outlined priorities. Do you have any comments on those priorities before we make a decision to move forward?
I don't think that I can add anything to what Staff Sergeant Lenenga already provided. The policing priorities, just for council's information, is it, it is in the package. The, the previous term is listed and the proposed priorities are being suggested as the same as what council had previously, unless there's particular interest of council, then they could proceed to consider that list for the directive for the next year.
All right, thank you. Council, would you like to proceed with the discussion or have any recommendations? Counselor Funk?
I recommend that we adopt these as our, as our performance plan, as our initiatives. As, as Harold said, they, they're very closely mirrored what's coming out of Ottawa, their initiatives too. So I think having that and I think these give them the freedom to work with the youth, like he was saying, and in other organizations and I think, I think if we just leave it with him, give him these, these parameters or these, I guess, priorities and just go forward with that.
Okay, thank you. So that's a motion. Can I have a secondary? Counselor Swagstra, anything further?
Nothing.
Thank you. Counselor Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Counselor Funk and I also agree with the comments around in terms of the excellent job that our Staff Sergeant is doing and the work that is happening. These are priorities that we've had for some time and I think they make sense. When we look at visibility of police, it's a communication aspect, but it's also a crime, it's also a crime prevention aspect because the more visibility you have, the more safe and secure people feel and the less likely that people are going to be committing crimes. The dealing with organized crime and the drug issue, that's sort of the longer-term investigation aspect and we know that drugs remain an issue and it's important we have that long-term focus and so continuing on that makes sense. Dealing with property crimes, that is obviously a longstanding frustration in terms of when property crimes happen, we need to address those. They're not minor issues and individual property crime may not be as big as a major drug takedown, but it matters a whole lot to the person whose home got broken into and we do need to make that a priority. And also dealing with traffic, that's very appropriate as a growing city. As traffic continues to increase, as it takes me longer and longer to get from one end of the city to the other, there's more of a potential for, for traffic accidents and issues to happen and we've seen a lot of changes in the roads with our new intersections and such and so we want to make sure that people are driving safety, safely. So when you look at these together, these priorities make a lot of sense for a city like ours.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Penner.
Yes, I also want to just say that Staff Sergeant Lenenga has been a huge asset to the city and echo some of the comments that have already been said, but I have also been here long enough to see other relationships that weren't so wonderful and didn't work as well. So the partnership between the city and the Staff Sergeant and the rest of the police service there is very good and I'm very grateful.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing? All right, council, obviously, we have a good relationship with our RCMP Staff Sergeant and we know that his staff work very hard to make our city safer. We do have the priorities in front of us and as Counselor Swagstra mentioned, I think these fit well with our, with the priorities of our community and to continue to work on that safety aspect and so I think we should move forward with this. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Thank you. We will now move to 8A and Mr. Workington, we've actually kind of gone through that already. Is that correct? Anything further?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Then we'll move to 8B and that's the Manitoba Municipal Relations Community Planning Assistance Program. This is an application. Mr. Workington.
This is being presented to council for consideration with the recent municipal board report in connection with the city's annexation application. The anticipation is that the annexation will be approved based on that recommendation and as a result, the city will need to proceed with a review of its official community plan and zoning bylaw. And the community and regional planning branch of the province does provide financial assistance in order for the city to do that and we're requesting council's consideration to approve a plan for a grant which could be up to 50% of the expected proposed costs of $42,000.
Thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner.
Move to approve.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Swagstra. Go ahead.
Yes, this particular application is very important, not only in the fact that there's a grant available for the work to be done, but in the fact that because we are in the process of annexing land and we're growing, there are many, many things that need to be looked at as far as the official community plan and zoning bylaw to make sure that we incorporate the annexed areas and the current boundaries of our city and to ensure that all of these policies reflect the newly annexed area as well.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Counselor Penner's comments and I'll just add that, you know, our official community plan is our document that sets out the direction of the city over the next, the next number of years and it's important that it be accurate and be up to date. Similarly, the zoning bylaws, you know, sets out the rules in terms of the city as a whole. And we are taking on, assuming that everything is approved, significant new land where we need to make sure that we have proper city standards and that we designate these, there are new landmasses appropriately and so I think it's very important we do this review and since we have the opportunity to receive some funding to help cover the cost of this review, it makes sense to apply this grant.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything in closing? Council, obviously, there's a lot of work to do over the next year as the, these lands do, if approved, do get incorporated into the city of Steinbach. It's going to be really important that we go through this carefully and that we include public consultation, that we go through all the mechanisms or use all the mechanisms that we did in our previous official community plan amendments as well as our zoning bylaw review that we did a number of years ago and I think getting a few dollars from the provincial government, up to 50% of the cost, I think is important and we need to move forward with this. This is going to be a major part of our work over the next year. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. You have the accounts payable in the back of the book, you've had a chance to review those. Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Siemens, seconded by Counselor Funk. Any discussion? Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on page 13. I see that we pay for the ads for the food trucks and stuff like that. Was that normal that we would pay that or would that be something that they would do in the course of their business, that they would maybe do the advertising for that?
Sorry, can you wait to restate your question just so I understand it?
I see that we do the advertising for the food trucks.
Right. Oh, okay, food truck, okay.
And so, yeah, is that not just something that they would do in the course of their business, they would do advertising or is it not through the city piece for that advertising? Just my thoughts.
All right, thank you. Mr. Workington, you want to just comment on that as, as part of the Canada 150 program?
Yes, the, the event as far as the, the weekly food truck event that was happening at the city's curling rink, that was a city, a city-initiated event. The, the advertisement was more generic for the overall event rather than specific food trucks and because it was a city-sponsored event, this, this was a legitimate expense for that program.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Is there further to that?
Sure.
I guess that's not something that we're going to be doing next year then or?
That is, it's currently under review and that will be considered as administration presents council with budget and programs for 2018 for approval.
Good, thank you. You'll get your chance. All right. Any other question, any other questions? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have the financial statement ending August 31 in the back of the book as well, you've had a chance to review that. Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Funk. Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. We have bylaw 2086, this is in regards to 209 Stonebridge Crossing. This is on page, sorry, I have building permits before that. August, this is on page 16, council, you've had a chance to review that, we're just shy of the $40 million mark. There's a motion on the bottom of that. Can I have someone make a motion, please, to accept that? Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. All right, we have bylaw 2086, 209 Stonebridge Crossing, this is on page 17. Mr. Workington, I'll get you to just introduce this, please.
Yes, this, Mr. Mayor, is a bylaw related to an application to rezone a property located at 209 Stonebridge Crossing in Steinbach from RLD residential low density to RMD residential medium density. Administration has provided background material starting on page 17 in the agenda package and if council believes there is merit to move this file forward, we are requesting council's consideration for first reading and if so, the public hearing for this rezoning application would be scheduled for October the 17th, council meeting.
Thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Siemens.
Motion to approve first reading.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Swagstra. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
Mr. Mayor, this is a request for a variation or rezoning on, on a property that's currently designated as commercial use to residential medium density and the, it's zoned commercial in our, in our official community plan, but it's currently under the residential low density. But if the, it looks good. At first, I'd be in favor, but ultimately, first reading then gives us the opportunity to hear from the public on what their feelings and they have an opportunity to speak to.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, in order to rezonate property, it has to go through three hearings and of course, the key one is the, is the, or three readings, the key one is the second one because that's where the public hearing happens and in the vast majority of cases, not always, but the majority of cases, we do give first reading so that way we have the opportunity to hear both from the applicant and to hear from the public and so I think it's appropriate for we move it ahead so we can hear what they have to say.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Workington, just a question and that is, this, this property is only 60 feet wide compared to the 75 minimum?
That is correct.
Okay, is that, are there, there aren't many rezonings in, when it comes to that narrower property for RMD, are there?
Not, not particularly. However, this is a specific application due to unique location and configuration of the lot.
Thank you. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. All right, we have 9E, we have bylaw 2085, local improvements on page 31. Mr. Workington.
This particular bylaw, 2085 and related local improvement plan relates to city's proposed capital project for, for the coming year to expand its water supply infrastructure. The bylaw was given second reading by council some time ago and was submitted to the Manitoba Municipal Board for consideration and approval. The Manitoba Municipal Board has now approved it. With respect to this bylaw, the gist of the project is to construct the facility for a total estimated cost of $11 million, of which the city has requested approval for debt funding of up to $5.375 million that will be financed by a venture to be issued at the completion of the project and recommendation is that council give this bylaw third reading.
Okay, thank you, council. How would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner.
Move to approve.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Swagstra. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, this is so that Steinbach, as we've grown, can construct further water supply system to serve the city. This will allow us to borrow just over $5 million and the balance of the funds will come from the clean water and wastewater fund and that will serve the city well.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Counselor Penner noted, the city contribution would be just under half of the total cost and we're still expecting to receive funding from the federal government that will cover the, the other portion of this. This is an important project. It's important that we expand our supplementary water supply system and the money here, we borrowed over five years and paid off in that time and I think it's a good reminder to us that our five-year debt policy works well, we'll have this paid off within five years and be able to do other projects.
All right, thank you, council. Anything further? In closing, but Counselor Fair, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've got a question. On page 36, it says you leaked 5.375 and replace it with 11, is that because we're uncertain about where the rest of the money's coming from at this point?
Mr. Workington, we are uncertain, but go ahead.
No, I can say we are not. We are, we are anticipating the funding to come from senior levels of government. However, it was noted, it was in fact an error in that particular paragraph. The total value of the project was to be represented in that paragraph, so that was a correction noted by the board.
Thank you. Anything further from council before, and in closing? Thank you, Counselor Penner.
Yes, just wanted to note that tonight, we have talked about reviewing our official community plan and our zoning bylaw and we've also talked community plan and our zoning bylaw, and we've also talked now about the supplementary water system, so obviously, we're reacting to the growth that we're seeing in the city. It's an exciting time for us, and we're doing the things we need to do to respond to that growth.
Thank you. Council, this is a major project. This is really important for the future of the city. It's also important for the present residents and businesses that are in the city, because this will improve water quality, it will improve stability of our water system, and it'll also allow us to move forward with growth that is in our future. And so to move this forward, I think is important. We do anticipate and we hope that we have a partnership with other levels of government to make this happen, and so we'll wait to see that before we proceed, but in the meantime, we're going to have all our ducks in a row, so this is very good. Call for the question, all those in favor. Carried. Any questions of council? Seeing none, we'll move to correspondence, and that is on page 41, and this is in regards to street parking on Reimer Avenue West. Council, you had a chance to review that. Any comments or thoughts? Would you like to refer this to administration for a recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you. Through consensus, thank you. We will refer this to administration for a recommendation. We will move to 11B, that's Partnerships for the Manitoba Capital Region, on page 42. Any comments? Seeing none, we will take that as information. Mr. Workington, do you have any thoughts on this letter at all, other than, any action you think we should be taking is actually my real question?
At this, at this point, I have no recommended action that I can suggest, other than it does provide an interesting alternative. I believe there are a couple of operators within Steinbach that are attempting to provide transportation between, certainly between Steinbach and Winnipeg, and...
Thank you.
About that.
Thank you. Then we'll take this as information, and we'll move on. If there's no other business, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Counsel Seaman, seconded by Counsel Penner, all those in favor. Carried. Thank you.